Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council this Monday, March 2nd, 2020, at after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be Monday, March 16th, 2020. If you would, Mr. Paolo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bestancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
All my council colleagues are here, so we do have a forum. The agenda will remain as presented, and at this time, I would ask you to stand and join the Worcester City Council in deciding the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I will need a motion to approve the minutes of February 18th, 2020.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Silvestri to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. You look like you were about...
I was ready.
Yeah, I appreciate that. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay, and the minutes are approved. Mr. Mayor, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke and members of city council. Nice to see everybody on a rainy semi-spring night. It's coming, I guess. Just some things to inform you and bring you up to speed on. Since our last meeting, we had a Worcester Community Hospital Board meeting about a week ago on Wednesday, and Team Neo Developer Forum over in Ashland, where we talked about what's happening out there in the development world and give some ideas about how to move your community forward. Our Charter Review Commission has been busy under the leadership of Mr. John Scavelli. They had their third meeting. It was just last Wednesday, I think, and they had advertised for public input at that meeting. A few people from the community did show up and were able to speak on whatever topic they wanted. But the group, I think, is gelling together very nicely. I think it's going to be a really good group for us. I think there's lots of ideas and conversation going on, and they're taking and dividing up the charter into bits and pieces so they can all work at forming good ideas and bringing them forward to you. So I'm pleased with what we're seeing out of the Charter Review so far. Last Thursday, Worcester Growth met as a body and brought forward a couple of recommendations. They voted to recommend to city council to extend CRA number two to the property inside the city on the 5L farm, and to revise the CRA map to include a parcel omitted on the original map. So CRA two is out in like the Hawkins Plaza area, and since the city purchased the 5L farm, when you voted to do that, since that meeting was coming up with Worcester Growth, the bottom or the western portion of the 5L farm is inside city limits, and so that was the motion to extend it out for commercial CRAs on that property. They also voted to, because of the sale of the property out on Long Road that Worcester Growth owned and Green Arrow purchased off of Worcester Growth, that they took $200,000 of that and gave it back to the city to help defray the cost of the 5L farm. So I thought that was a really good and very nice gesture of Worcester Growth to do that, and so that was another thing that they voted on. And then the third, they voted discussing the formation of a citywide CRA. They voted not to recommend to city council the forming of a citywide CRA. Dr. Teufs from the schools and Mike Knappick of the school board were at the meeting, and Dr. Teufs went on record saying the school district does not support a citywide CRA. Myself personally believe that this citywide CRA could harm our downtown because it would take away from that area and divert some of the developmental funds out to greenfield sites. And the city administration supports what are called TIFs, tax increment financing for incentives outside of the CRA areas. We think that they're a better vehicle to help incentivize without some of the harmful things that might roll out of it. So that's what came out of the Worcester Growth meeting. And then today, Joel and I went to the annual Wayne County Health Department meeting, and some good, interesting facts. We are part of that health district, and Dr. Nick Cascarelli, the health commissioner, volunteered that if council would ever like him to come and present to you what a health district does and how they play into our city, he'd be happy to do that, and we'd be happy to set that up. So if there's any interest in that, please let us know, and we'll try to arrange that. And that's everything we have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. No petitions, and I don't believe anyone signed up, so there's no communications from the public. Committee reports, there are none, and public hearings, there are none, although we are tentatively scheduled to have a joint laws and ordinance and a finance committee meeting on April 6th, if I recollect, to discuss the issue of the CRA and hear from members of industry. And next council, before next council meeting, we'll get to go over to the fire station and see Chief Salee's new giant Tonka toy, and there will be some firefighters sworn in prior to us. As he said, the important deal, people can then just walk back here. I told them I wasn't important because I don't vote, so can I just stay out there at the fire station?
What time do you think you want the April 6th?
6.
6?
Starting at 6.
All right. So that kind of takes care of some housekeeping matters, and will bring us to unfinished business, which will be Mr. Sanders presenting ordinance number 2020-01, which is the replacement pages to our codified ordinances. Being second reading, he can decide whether or not to move it to final reading or keep it on just second reading. But before I even get there, you can at least contemplate, if you haven't already, what you want to do, Mr. Sanders. I will have our clerk of council read the title.
Ordinance number 2020-01, an ordinance to approve and adopt current replacement pages to codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As of roughly 3 o'clock this afternoon, I had sent out to council, I had received from Mr. Scavelli, a summary of the codified ordinances that we're going to be modifying or amending, and I sent those out to all the council members, which at this point, we will leave this on second reading this evening. You guys can look at it. We'll vote on it in two weeks, but basically, it boils down to what is being added is the term electric bicycle, and there's actually some additional minor regulations towards that. If you go back and look at the old traffic regulations, the electric bicycles that have become a mainstay in a lot of areas, and I know Holmes County's had their own fair share of how to handle these things because they go faster than a moped, but yet they have no, they really have no regulations, or they didn't up till now. So now they're actually, they're defined within the traffic laws of the state of Ohio, and for the most part, that's the majority of what the addendums are. So with that, like you say, we'll just, like you say, I sent out to all your emails, all your city emails. You can have it, look it over. You know, got questions, you can ask me or you can ask Mr. Scavelli, but at this point, I think it's fairly self-explanatory in terms of what's going on, but we'll let these ride, and we'll address them in the next, in two weeks.
Okay, well, consider ordinance number 2020-02 as, or 2020-01 is having its second reading. We're turning our attention to new business, and it'll be the first reading of many with regard to certain bonds and reissuing, and as Mr. Doherty had said, that because cash is fungible, that we can do this, do these things without having an impact with regard to the budget, because it's just a matter of going from one, a different pocket than what was originally contemplated. But if you want more detail into the intimacies of public financing, I'm sure Mr. Doherty will give a succinct Reader's Digest version, if you are so requested, but he did tee it up the other day with regard to how this, all these moving parts work. This will be presented by Mr. Ansel, ordinance number 2020-02, and it is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I'm going to ask Mr. Paolo to take a deep breath and read this title.
I understand there was a request for me to read the entire document.
Yes.
Ordinance number 2020-02, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $1,565,000 for the purpose of paying costs of improving and extending streets and roads in the city, including but not limited to West Highland Avenue, Sunset Lane, and Daisy Way, by constructing, reconstructing, resurfacing, grading, draining, curbing, paving, installing traffic signalization, and making other improvements as designated in the plans, approved or to be approved by council, together with the necessary related improvements and appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Now you take a brief rest, and I will turn the floor over to Mr. Ansel.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three pieces of legislation this evening that focus on budgeted capital expenditures for improvements within the city. As Ms. DePaulo outlined, the first for $1.56 million is for improving, extending streets and roads within the city. While this would have been paid out of cash reserves due to the acquisition of the 5L farm for a little over $2 million, now we're forced to go out and finance. The good news, and timing is very opportune, because we're dealing with some of the lowest financing rates available ever, ever. So the timing could not be more ideal, and Mr. Doherty had put some treasury bond statistics out, and we're also going to have several other pieces of legislation. We're going to refinance existing debt at a much lower rate, at substantial savings. So this initiative, again, came at an opportune time. We're getting monies at very low interest rates over the 15, 20-year term, so we can go ahead and proceed with these budgeted initiatives. If there isn't any discussion, we can move these forward because they're very straightforward. If there is, we can always wait unless you, let you query the administration more. Yes, Mr. Cavan?
I only had one question comment. Since we've written this with the volatility in the markets recently, does this have any impact on what you're attempting with?
It's actually had a very favorable impact for us. I'll just, I just read this article before I came down here. Long-term U.S. Treasury yields hit record lows. Not only that, the futures market is, are they betting on that the Fed in two weeks will cut interest rates by half a percent. So it's luckily, I mean, it's very timely, and I had absolutely nothing to do with that, other than I got lucky as far as timing on this issue, but...
Better to be lucky than good, you know?
And this is just total law.
And if I could, if I could show something, so I got some statistics. On Friday, the city of Mentor, Ohio, sold $9,755,000 in 15-year debt. The winning bid was 1.5014%.
Wow.
Fifteen-year debt.
Unheard of levels.
So it's very timely, and yeah, it's, I've never seen anything like this in my, I've 28 years doing this.
Well, you know, we could have either paid cash for the 5L farm or then tried to finance it, and we're just moving money from one pocket to another.
Yes, money is...
Based on the circumstances.
Yes.
Frankly, I think time is of the essence, not to tarry too long, because who knows what the vagaries and the nervous nellies and the Chicken Littles saying the sky is falling with regard to this coronavirus. So, I mean, we would have had to get, we would have issued bonds, it's just what we're issuing it for the, which project we're issuing it for.
And the other thing I did want to add, we're only going to go 15 years on the new money debt, and all the other four issues, what we'll do is we'll keep that, their same maturity. For example, the 2010 will only be 11 years.
Okay.
The 2000, the 1, 2004, I think regarding the water, will be 14 years. The sewer, 2014 will be 20 years. And our safety center, which is the 2015, it'll be 16 years.
And to be clear, that's all locked in. That's not going to change. That's not variable.
Well, yeah, these, these maturities are going to be locked in. There won't be any...
Good question.
Yes, correct.
Unless we pay it off early.
Well, right, there'll be a provision that we could call them, and I think a certain number of years. I think after 10 years, we could call these bonds, but I would doubt that, I mean, the rates would have to be like zero or something, like then we're going to call them. So I'm just anxious to see what actual rates come in. Obviously, if you agree to this, I will actually share those rates with you.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any compelling reason we should move forward or not move forward this evening? Does it help the situation to...
Yeah, I have a schedule set that we'd like to, it's pretty aggressive. We'd like to sell these on Tuesday, Tuesday, July, I'm sorry, Tuesday, the 7th of April.
So it takes about 30 days to get them on the market for sale.
Yeah, there's, I have to put...
Published, announced.
I have to put together this official statement that's...
Well, you saw that, I mean, 12-page dissertation, and there is a process.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's for sure. And it's a very detailed and elaborate process.
This is showing that we're complying with SEC requirements to investors and things like that, and then it'll go to, like the deal in Mentor, Ohio, it'll be a public auction, and a lot of participants in that auction. It's pretty exciting. So like I said, I'm very excited. I haven't seen anything like this ever in my 28 years doing this. Rates are low.
What I would recommend...
So the shorter answer is yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, we take advantage of this and capitalize on the record.
I'm glad you're excited. That's good.
So he can begin the process, and in 30 days, we can have our bids secured and closed. And if it does decline within the next 30 days, or goes up, there's, you know, some volatility there, but right now, all indicators is it might go down even a little further.
I think the market went up a little today, I think.
Yeah, and oftentimes...
It's been really cratering.
Oftentimes, there's sometimes inverse relationships with the stock market versus
Oh, of course.
A lot of times, people pull out of the stock market, go into the bond market. That drives bond prices up, which, the yield is inverse to that, so the yield goes down, which is good for us when you're borrowing, not when you're...
Well, let's not delay, and I would motion to suspend the rules and move ordinance 2020-02 to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr....
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2020-2, oh, -02 passes. Next ordinance, number 2020-03, presented by Mr. Ansel. It deals with certain bonds as well. It's slated for three readings. Before I get to you, I'll have Ms. DePaulo read it. This is a little shorter here, Ms. DePaulo, and we have a lot for you to read tonight, so I hope...
Yes, you do.
Hopefully, we don't wear you out by the end of the evening. If you would read this ordinance.
Ordinance number 2020-03, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $445,000 for the purpose of paying costs of improving the city's parks and recreational facilities by constructing and installing improvements at Clear Creek Park and Freelander Park, all together with the necessary appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours again.
Yes, again, these are budgeted items in our 2020 budget. The only thing council is approving is the securing of the bond funding for the financing, rather than paying cash for these undertakings, ditto to the prior ordinance that we just discussed and reviewed, with the exception of the lesser amount that had been earmarked for those capital improvements. So recognizing the affirmation of the prior ordinance that is on a similar type of plane, I would motion to suspend the rules and move ordinance 2020-03 to third and final reading this evening.
Okay, a motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Rules are suspended. Do you have a...
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Myers, seconded. If you would, please call, well, any further discussion, I don't want to keep people from weighing in on this, but it's basically the same thing that we've previously discussed, is to be able to, we're just, in this case, using bond money to finance this improvement, rather than using bond money to finance the purchase of the 5L farm, since we use some of our cash reserves.
Mr. Silvestri?
Just one question on this one, if I may. Andre, I think, I think you had given the answer, but I want to make sure that this applies here. For the park improvements in your memorandum, you said $400,000, but the actual amount here is $445,000. Is that just because we've paid it down by about 45, or?
Yeah.
Is that, is that the difference, or am I missing something else?
Yeah, no. So what they do when they draft, probably they draft the bond legislation, they probably put a 10% factor in the numbers, just in case.
Okay. It just seemed like kind of a round number.
Right.
To go from 445 down to 400. So, okay. And so I think we should at least underscore the fact, too, that this is for all the refinancings. We're saving about a million and a half?
Yeah.
No, that's, this isn't refinancing.
Yeah, the first, the first three...
We're not into those yet. This is the, this is the new money.
We have one more, yeah.
Number two.
Yeah, new financing.
Correct. The first three are new money.
Basically, it's monies we would have used for 5L to finance. So as he said, it's fungible, which I remember that word from law school when we were talking about secure transactions and contracts. So anyways, anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2020-03 passes. And the next ordinance is number 2020-04, scheduled for three readings by Mr. Ansel. And then just underscore, this has to deal with new bond money for this particular project. So before I get to you again, Mr. Ansel, I will have Mr. Paolo read the title.
Ordinance number 2020-04, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $235,000 for the purpose of paying costs of resurfacing and making other improvements to city surface parking areas, together with the necessary appurtenance thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, what we have here is the trifecta this evening in terms of new financing at record-low interest rates. This is for a lesser amount, 235, which was budgeted, and it's securing new financing via bond bidding within the next 30 days. So that being recognized, while we have the momentum, I would motion to waive the rules and move ordinance 2020-04 to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Again, Mr. Paolo, I'll ask you kindly to please read the title, or call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules.
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. And I'll point out that even with my public school mass skills, when you add these all together, they come close to what the cost of the 5L farm was. So that's why these are new financing coins. Any other discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bestancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2020-04 passes. Now getting into refinancing, this is ordinance number 2020-05, as the John Ansel Show continues. Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I will ask once again if Mr. Paolo would please read the title.
Ordinance number 2020-05, an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $6,515,000 for the purpose of refunding certain of the city's outstanding Safety Center Improvement Bonds, Series 2015, dated July 21st, 2015, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is really a unique initiative, and I want to compliment the administration for their due diligence in identifying these opportunities. This is a true refinancing option, much as people do on their home, going from a higher interest rate to a lower interest rate, to minimize or reduce their monthly or annual expense. And this opportunity, this window of opportunity, does coincide with our earlier discussion, because we're at lifetime record levels of available funds. So with that, in the bundled group that we're going to discuss tonight, the four pieces, the first is for the Safety Service Center, which is the largest component of our refinancing, is $6,515,000, give or take, that will be targeted for refinancing. And based on the preliminary review in January that actually had a higher treasury bond basis of about 2.23%, it's lower than that today, and hopefully in 30 days, when we secure our funding, it'll be in that 1.5 to 1.8. But a very conservative savings over the next, through 2039, as Mr. Doherty had highlighted, we're going to keep our years of debt reduction in place, is at the higher bond issuance in January of 2.238% was 1.495 million, so almost 1.5... higher bond issuance in January of 2.238% was 1.495 million, so almost 1.5 million. It potentially is going to be greater than that when we do lock in, let's hope so, significant. And in essence, even though there's a time value of money, this almost funds the purchase of the five L farm, which is very important for the constituents. Yes, we do lose some time value of money, but in essence, over that fifteen-to-twenty-year period, we will have recouped what we've paid for the five L farm through this refinancing initiative. So, well done, way to keep your finger to the pulse of the market. The timing couldn't be better, and it is all about timing and seizing that opportunity. So without further ado, I would like to fast-track this. You have, Mr. Sylvester?
Just one point of clarification. From the memo, it looked like that savings is from all four pieces, right?
It would be all four.
Okay.
Of course.
Okay.
I said we need to bundle the four together.
I got you.
Yeah, yeah. And the total bundle is fourteen million, nine hundred and five thousand dollars, so almost fifteen million dollars of outstanding debt in the various levels that Mr. Doherty highlights. I think one is another ten years, and the longest is about fifteen years, right, Andre?
Yeah, our longest was, would be the 2014 sanitary sewer at twenty years.
Okay, yeah, so.
Same, ten percent.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's significant, and it will, potentially, Mr. Sylvester, it could be over ten percent. So it's a wonderful opportunistic initiative. Thank you, well done, and let's proceed. Ms. Warden, you had a comment?
I don't know.
And Mr. Cavan?
Oh, I, I just had a, a quick, as far as the Safety Center, we started out, it was seven point seven, then was that the initial? And we're down to six point five now. Will we keep the same payoff date?
Amortization schedule.
The principal will be very close to the same one. The interest will be much smaller. That's where our savings will be in the interest.
Right. So we'll realize that monthly, or how, how do you?
Um, it's twice a year.
Twice a year.
Payments are, are June first and December first. So they're, yeah, so twice a year we make those payments.
Good question.
That's, that's really exciting.
Yeah.
Do you know what our projected annual interest rate's going to be on these?
Well, it was one and a half percent with, with Manner.
Yeah, but I, I mean, what's that in terms of actual dollars out, outflow?
As far as what our monthly amort payments are?
Yeah, for the year, so, you know, you say we pay in, in what, June, and at the end of the year?
Yeah, so we actually do, I think, what we do, we do one interest payment in June, and then in July, I'm sorry, in December, we do a principal and interest.
Yeah, I was just wondering how much the interest was.
Um, let's see if I did.
I, I mean.
Well, it's not level loaded, it's just like your home mortgage, so.
Yeah.
You're paying much less principal.
I don't know.
At the beginning.
And I didn't bring, I can get that for you.
Well, I was just wondering if, until we develop five L farm, how much of the, if we lease the, lease the land for farmland, how much of?
Ten thousand dollars a year for the farming lease. Roughly, Joel, that's about what it was. I talked to the, the farmer.
That'll be the first year, and then we're dishonoring when we, with the, the other part.
I was just wondering how.
Well, let's see, yeah, so, and the, well, the principal and the new bonds is going to vary, you told me the new or the old, I got the new.
The new.
The new schedules right here, but for example, on, on the entire issue, the, when, once you get down to, it's about a million dollars until you get to year twenty thirty-one, then you're down to eight, and then you go down twenty thirty-five to six hundred thousand, then you go down twenty thirty-six to two hundred thousand a year.
Wow.
And the highest ever in interest amount is like a hundred thousand dollars. So.
Well, we'll, we'll cover about ten percent.
Yeah.
Ten percent of that, so it, it sounds like a good deal all the way around. Plus, maybe we get lucky and sell a good chunk of land, so recoup some of that, and then we can invest that and use that interest for paying our interest.
Motion to suspend the rules and move ordinance twenty twenty oh five to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Sylvester. Would you please call the roll, Ms. DePaulo?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostansik?
Yes.
Any questions on this ordinance for our financial whiz there, Mr. Doherty? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to, well, we need to.
You need to, you need to have the motion.
A motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Any further question? All right, second by Mr. Bostansik. Anything else? Seeing none, now, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero five passes. Turning to ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero six, it'll be presented for, by Mr. Ansel. It's scheduled for three readings. Ms. DePaulo, would you please read the title?
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh six. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $2,655,000 for the purpose of refunding certain of the city's outstanding water system improvement bonds, Series 2014, dated June 24, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, similar to the prior ordinance, this will be a refinancing of 2.655 million dollars for water system improvement. It's budgeted, this, it's already expended, we're just refinancing it, and it's at the lower interest rate, so very similar to the prior two, and based on that, I will motion to proceed, yes, suspend the rules for twenty twenty dash oh six.
All right, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any other discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero six passes. Turning to ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero seven, again, it'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. Again, it is scheduled for three readings, and once again, I look to Ms. DePaulo to please read the title.
Ordinance number twenty twenty oh seven. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $3,990,000 for the purpose of refunding certain of the city's outstanding sewerage system improvement bonds, Series 2014, dated October 30, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, I turn the floor to you again.
Yes, repeat of the prior two, refinancing for sewer system improvements that were originally obligated in 2014, so much as the other two ordinances, I will motion to suspend the rules and move twenty twenty dash oh seven to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. I look to you again, Mr.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sylvester. Any discussion? It's pretty much the, the same, this is going to save us money, and it's a good thing.
I have a question. I know, I understand that this particular ordinance is for refinancing, but is there, is there a way to capitalize on these, these interest, um, interest rates for the funding of the sludge tank that has been proposed?
Well, we were going to pay those with cash.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, we didn't entertain a financing option on those.
Out of the revenue fund?
Correct.
Okay, I forgot that. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty day zero seven passes. Brings us to the last ordinance with regard to refinancing. It's slated by, to be presented by Mr. Ansel, as the other ones have, slated for three readings, but before we get to him, I'll ask that Ms. DePaulo read ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero eight.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh eight. An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $1,745,000 for the purpose of refunding certain of the city's outstanding various purpose bonds, Series 2010, dated October 13, 2010, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, as highlighted, this 1.745 million dollars is for sanitary and storm sewer refinancing. Those were originated in 2010, so there'll be about another ten years remaining, and it's the same as before at a lower financing rate. So without further ado, I would motion to suspend the rules and move twenty twenty dash oh eight to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please read the, or call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Rules being suspended, I will turn to you once again.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if you would, please, Ms. DePaulo, call the roll on ordinance number twenty twenty day zero eight, the motion to adopt.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostansik?
Yes.
Myers?
No, I'm kidding. Just thinking if everybody was awake.
I'm glad I wasn't drinking water.
Good one, counsel, Myers.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty twenty day zero eight, and before we leave the financing, I, I must say, before I forget to, because I might not remember miscellaneous, to wish our finance director happy birthday, his birthday is tomorrow, if my, if my, I don't even remember being that young, but his birthday is tomorrow, March 3.
May 3.
Happy birthday.
May 3.
May 3.
May 3. Sorry. Something popped up on my calendar saying it was your birthday today. All right, well, I'll have to wait till May 3. Well, you were well thought of.
The thought was there.
Well, now, after all this dizzying high finance, get to something that is a little more concrete, no pun intended, with regard to resolution number twenty twenty dash thirteen, it'll be presented by Mr. Bostansik. It is a budgeted item, so no suspension of the rules is required, but it is required that I look to Ms. DePaulo to please read the title.
Resolution number twenty twenty dash thirteen. A resolution authorizing Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for furnishing the.
By Tuminus.
That's the word, material.
Mr. Bostansik, the floor is yours.
See, I, I just say asphalt.
It's so much easier, isn't it?
So much easier, yes.
Well, you know, that, that, that's like a attorney weasel word, you know? Instead of asphalt, which everyone knows, they put by Tuminus, which no one knows.
Well, this one's, this piece of legislation is a lot less complicated than what we have just been dealing with. We just need to buy some asphalt. Coming up one spring, time to resurface. Last year, PPM used about 4,800 tons of asphalt for about $300,000. They're looking to spend up to $300,000 for approximately, they think, what, about 4,500 ton this year. Like, like you just mentioned, it is a budgeted item, and that's pretty much it.
So you're moving to?
We're moving to adopt.
Motion to.
If there are any questions.
By Mr. Bostansik, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Sylvester. Any questions?
Looks like the price of this material is down as well as our interest rates. Is that true? Is that what we're hoping for? A little bit lower.
As is the cost per barrel of oil.
There could be a slight increase just with the gas tax, so we build in that factor.
So your folks are going to be busy once again this summer, and hopefully the rains will hold off on the paving days.
Yes.
When do you anticipate start paving? It's just, you look at a day and say, it looks like a good day?
June, sometime in June, probably.
Sometime in June.
Any other questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ass, asphalt, no.
That almost sounded like something else.
Hey, that happened to me throughout school, girl, trust me.
Okay. Bostansik?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden? Warden?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2020-13 passes. That brings us to resolution number 2020-14, and that's something else I can kind of get my head around with regarding a front-end wheel loader. It'll be presented by Ms. Warden, and I will again point out this is a budgeted item. Before I get to you, Ms. Warden, I will turn my eyes to Mr. Paul and request that you read the title.
Resolution number 2020-14, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to purchase a front-end wheel loader in accordance with the capital plan for 2020.
Ms. Warden, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As President Biden said, this is a budgeted item. It is a capital expense and a request from the Public Properties Maintenance Department. Currently, the city is using a 1996 Case 621B model front-end, bless you, wheel loader. It uses this device to load its dump trucks for street maintenance, storm drainage, and road salt for snow and ice control operations. It's also used to transport road plates throughout the city and to load and stack road salt each year. Currently, it has 8,200 hours, and it is in need of a new hydraulic pump. And then for the purposes that it's used for in the city, the front-end loader, this particular one, has surpassed its useful life, so upon council's approval this evening, it'll be either traded in or sold on gov deals, whichever brings the highest dollar value. The new front-end loader is expected to cost approximately $200,000, and it's subject to competitive bid from the city's list of approved vendors. Mr. Denning is here in the audience tonight. He's the Public Properties Maintenance Manager, and he can answer any questions that council might have regarding this request.
Do you have a motion for?
Sure, if there are no further questions. I know, I'm, I'm reading off my, remember I told you I make notes, so I'm like, I'll wait.
I have a script too, so I, I understand.
Yes, so I moved to adopt the resolution, and then we'll go.
Yeah, then we'll.
24 years of youthful service is pretty impressive.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Warden is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bastancic. Now, Ms. Warden's offering to open it up to questions?
Mr. Bastancic, thank you.
I'm just curious, Kurt, what do you expect to get for a used front loader like that?
Yeah, probably around $15,000 is what we'll get for that piece.
Thanks. I'm just curious.
Mr. Denning, I gotta say, it's probably, to some people, not as sexy as a ladder truck, but those in the heavy equipment, this is quite a special piece of equipment, and, you know, to get as many years out of what we got out of the other one, and that's hard use, hours, don't tell the story of how much wear and tear that puts on it. People think only 8,000 hours, but that's a lot of hours for a piece of equipment, so.
And I will note that Mr. Denning explained to this evening that there, there is a second front-end loader that the city also uses. Currently, we try to get about a 20-year lifespan, and so, as Mr. Ansel noted, this is at 24 years. I think that's commendable for our service department that they've been maintaining it.
Our service department and all other departments take good care of our equipment. It's amazing how many years we get out of things, but eventually, all things wear out, and, you know, after 24 years, it's probably deserving a retirement to work at a nice, quiet village or township, probably where something like this would go, possibly, so anyways, hopefully this works out as well, so. Any other questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2020-14 passes, and, you know, if you want, when it comes, if you want to have a little meeting to show it off, I'll be happy to come out and see it. I like big equipment like that, so.
You're more than welcome to come anytime you want.
All right.
Don't let him drive it.
Yeah. Then the final piece of legislation is a resolution that kind of the state of Ohio is asking us to pass. It's non-binding, at least, that's what Mr. Scavelli related it to me. I know it was at the last minute, but we're not spending any money, and we might get some money if an opioid settlement comes through. It'll be presented by Mr. Myers, and I think it's slated for three readings. I didn't get it downloaded after I had already downloaded the others. Before I get to you, Mr. Myers, I will ask Mr. Paul to use those wonderful pipes one last time and read the title of this.
Resolution number 2020-15, a resolution to accept the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Biden. I get the word for shortest title of the ordinance this evening, right?
Yes, you do. Mr. Scavelli must have been tired.
We had to write all this.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Scavelli to explain the purpose of this better than I can, so please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. As many of you are aware, the state of Ohio, as many of you are aware, the state of Ohio and many municipalities are currently involved in a class action lawsuit against pharmaceutical companies, drug distributors, everybody that was involved at some level with opioid distribution or sales. Is it on right? Oh, thank you.
It's not close enough.
Oh, it's not, okay. Based upon that, they believe they have come to a settlement. What's important about this is a lot of other states are also involved in similar litigation with similar parties, and the state of Ohio ended up being the first to settle. That's important when you're talking class action lawsuit, because where the defendants in this case generally have quite a bit that they can put into a settlement like this, the funds are not unending, and for that reason, being early is better. And so, they're trying to get this wrapped up as soon as possible. When you're talking about a class action lawsuit, these settlements, because you have a lot of people that are not directly taking part in the settlement themselves, and we are not, the judge usually takes a lot of time to determine whether or not to actually approve a settlement, because a lot of times, the worry is that the attorneys might just want to settle it, because that way, they get their money out of it and then not worry about the class members. In this case, this is a settlement that is approved and supported by the governor and by the Attorney General. They are requesting our involvement, and what this really is, is this is a vote of confidence in that settlement. What they're hoping will happen is, and this is all supported, by the way, by the OMAA and the OML, what they're really hoping is that they can get as many municipalities to say they're on board as possible. That way, they can go to the judge and tell the judge, hey, you know, this many, however, whatever the number is, are in support, which they think will help the judge to approve the settlement. The settlement itself essentially will give a certain percentage to different municipalities. I would love to tell you, I could tell you how much Worcester's going to get right now, but the truth is, we really just don't know. We have kind of an idea, but I, it wouldn't really be a good idea to really say that at this point, because it, that is still subject to change. Also, so a portion will go to, directly to municipalities, another portion goes to the state, and another portion will go, obviously, to the lawyers that were involved, because they're the ones that handled all the work for this. Another portion will go to a foundation. That foundation will take, I believe, approximately 50-some percent of the total settlement, and then further distribute it, and all different regions throughout Ohio, they're breaking it down into 19 different regions, will then go further distribute the money. The money that gets distributed from the settlement has to be used for basically further work, taking care of problems that are still existing from the opioid epidemic. It was approved and changed to allow for restitution for past efforts, which is good. That's something that the OMAA pushed for, because that way, a city can go back and say, well, hey, a couple of years ago, we spent a ton on this. It's, it's not as much now, but we spent a lot a few years ago, so now, we're going to go ahead and take that money and apply it to what we spent in the past. And so, that was something that the municipalities in particular were pushing for, because they're saying, well, we're not spending as much on this as we used to, but we're definitely, we did spend a lot on it a few years ago. So, that's something that we're able to do under the settlement. Like I said, this is non-binding, which Mr. Biden, President Biden said. What that means is, if we don't pass it, if we do pass it, we're not obligated toward anything here. Like I said, it's mostly a vote of confidence. Now, I was told that if we do pass this, we're more likely to have a place at the table. I don't really see anything in here that leads me to believe that's necessarily the case, because we're a member of the class, so regardless, I think that we're fine, even if you choose not to pass this, but it would be helpful to them if we did. If you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Do they have a dollar amount for the entire settlement that they're looking at? Has that been published yet?
I don't know if we know exactly what it's going to be yet, because it, that's, it's definitely, it's in the, it's a billion north, so, yeah, it's, it's large.
So, we'd have, if we would get any monies, we'd have to spend, say, for rehab or maybe additional police hours we had in the past for drug, drug problems, and so on, so somewhere around those lines?
Yes, yes.
Well, hopefully, we would be able to help the families affected too. I know a lot of children are forgotten in this whole mix, you know, losing their parents and things like that.
For sure. This particular memorandum doesn't address use of funds. That is part of the lawsuit and part of the settlement. This basically says, we, we will participate in supporting the taking of a settlement versus dragging this out in the courts. 30% of the settlement amount, whatever that amount ends up being, does come directly to the local governments like us for those purposes. The foundation gets 55%, which will also be used to support those kinds of efforts, education, which is a different bucket of money for that portion that'll go through the foundation, so. Ms. Warden, did you have a question?
I did. This is, I was just, I guess, asking, is this similar to the lawsuit that I believe was filed, I want to say it was the state of Oklahoma, but it was against Johnson &amp; Johnson, if I'm correct?
Yes, Johnson &amp; Johnson is one of the defendants in this suit as well.
Okay.
They're very similar. Like I said, the, the big key here is that we're, there's only so much, at the end of the day, when we're talking billions of dollars, there's only so much that's there.
Right.
And so, being one of the first, beating out Oklahoma and other states is a good thing for Ohio. And matter of fact, one of the reasons that they're saying that we may end up being one of the first is because so many of our municipalities have been cooperating with each other in how this is going to be handled, as opposed to some other states that may not have been quite as cooperative amongst their local governments.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay. I'd like to make, motion to move this to third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gavin. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rule?
Gavin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Mr. Myers, I look to you again.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any other questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to approve?
Gavin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Resolution number 2020-15 passes. Brings us to the miscellaneous portion. I must say, I was disappointed that Mr. Scavelli was down at Disney World and didn't bring us any hats or a t-shirt or anything.
Next time, mouse ears, I promise.
If nothing else, he should have, should have brought something for Mr. Gibbons, having to sit in for him, but I thought, at least I'd get mouse ears, but I know where I stand on his rank of importance. That being said, we're going to start tonight with Mr. Myers.
Well, thank you. Just wanted to note one thing. We had a pass in last week of Joe DeLuca, a friend and a member of our community for a very long time. He's one of the, one of the veterans of World War II. He passed away last week. Many of you may have seen him down at Beulah's. He used to eat down at Beulah's for breakfast every single day, seven days a week, and a really outstanding individual, and he did pass away last week.
Okay. Mr. Sanders?
Just a reminder that we will delve into the CRA conversation on April 6th at 6:00 PM here in council chambers, and the primary reason for the meeting, at least on this one, is going to be to hear from the industry leaders in the community to discuss the housing issue in the community.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sanders. Mr. Sylvester?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything else to add tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Warden?
I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Mr. Ansel, you've done a lot of talking.
Nothing more to add this evening.
Mr. Bastancic?
Nothing more tonight.
And we'll give you the final word there, Mr. Gavin.
Well, I would like to thank Mr. Andre Dordia for his hard work efforts, saving us tons of money. How, how lucky we are. Very good job.
Yeah, here, here. We're lucky to have you as our finance director and hope you stick around for, for a while, or at least to your birthday in May.
Ditto that. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Myers.
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, one and all.